The election is just a few days away. Tuesday, May 14th is primary election day in Frederick. And all, no matter what your party affiliation, you will be voting for the Board of Education. And no matter whether you have a child at FCPS or not, you still should be educated about who is on the Board of Education. And that's why I've been doing this series. So I would like to welcome Jamie Brennan with me today. Hello.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Well, I thank you so much for making the time. I've got some questions that parents have submitted and going to give you the opportunity to answer them. So hopefully those who haven't made a decision yet can make a decision based on these interviews.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so what do you feel are the top three priorities of FCPS? If you were to be elected, what are the first three things you feel like should be tackled?
We have to tackle our proficiencies. Our children are only about 50% proficient, depending on the grade and level we're talking about. We should absolutely tackle special needs issues, you know, the consent decree, the things that led to that, the vulnerability. And then we also really need to attack the budget as we've talked about, that we have quite a funding challenge. And I think that that's an extremely important, you know, perspective of the board. You know, that's where the board really works on.
Yeah, yeah, and I would agree with all of those things. I guess taking each one of those into account. So you said first proficiencies. I was reading something that I think 30% of the kids who graduate from FCPS are not college or career ready upon graduation. What do you feel the Board's power is in helping to raise the number of proficiencies, the percentage, raise the, you know, graduation level of those kids, you know, being closer to 80 to 90%? I mean, really, 100% of kids who graduate high school should be able to at least figure out how to get a job or go to college or know that there might be some steps that they can take.
Well, I think so. The Board is primarily responsible for directing the priorities of the administration. And so if we have a Board that is not directing efforts towards making sure that the administration is focused on college and career readiness and making sure that we're raising our proficiency standards, then we're not going to have administration focused on that. And I think no shade to Dr. Geisling. You know, she's recently come into this mess. So this is going back 10 or 15 years. You know, we did not just get here. So this is going back to other administrations. And some of it is curricular, particularly when it comes to like our reading proficiencies. We have used a really a bad reading curriculum for almost 30 years, if you go all the way back. So helping to direct administration to look at different curriculums, to demand some level of kind of cost benefit analysis when we start talking about implementing new programs. We want to make sure that we're not just chasing the latest FAD. And I feel that across education, we do that quite a bit. And then when we have caught that latest FAD, then we fully embrace it and it's very hard to get out of it. So I think we need to move back to a science-based reading and writing curriculum, curriculums that show actual student improvement. Sometimes this gets confused with a curriculum that will have their own measurements of improvement. But if we're not seeing the needle move on our standardized testing, then that curriculum isn't effective, right? So it might have its own measurements in there. And sometimes they do. You know, I read as a prime example of that, where it will test the students as it goes and it indicates, oh, the student hasn't improved. But the MCATs don't say that, right? So we need to make sure that the administration is kind of focusing on things, curriculums, policies, interventions that absolutely improve student performance. And that's another thing that's a policy issue that impacts that. It's kind of standard practice to largely wait until a child is two grade levels behind before FCPS starts their intervention process, starts discussing that with parents necessarily, starts, you know, suggesting, hey, we should have this child evaluated and those sorts of things. And in my opinion, like that is already too late. You know, we've kind of lost that child to some degree. They've already felt bad about their school performance. They've already been, you know, lost their confidence. So I think overall, that's just kind of one of these things that we need to direct administration to look at changing that policy and getting involved sooner.
Yeah, I mean, that is really kind of incredible, to be honest. Two grade levels. You talked a little bit about getting the budget under control. I mean, I don't know what it is about, you know, the last 20 years in government from the federal level down to state to local, but this, this fact of the matter that, you know, we're given a certain amount of money and it is a shortfall every time. And then it seems that the teachers are taking it on the chin every time. Or, you know, things are cut that obviously are beloved by people, you know, whether it's the arts or music or sports or whatever that is. How do we, how do we move from that? How do we move that we only get the $900 million right now and it's $50 million too little to fund our system?
So the budgeting is very complicated. We are actually getting more money than we did last year. Okay, so, and we also have, you know, an MLE which requires a certain minimum amount of funding, which means we can't ever get less per pupil than we got the year before. So the only time we would ever see a decrease is, you know, a significant decrease in enrollment. So we're not actually losing money. So the question is, why is what we had last year not good enough? Right? So obviously we have things we have to take into account. And, you know, inflation is part of why things aren't good enough. We have raises and contractual obligations. But the reality is that FCPS has become top-heavy. Our administrative costs compared to enrollment have outpaced, have grown. So we used to have a certain number of administrators per student and that keeps increasing. So, right, so why are we adding administrators? You know, yes, we are adding students, but we do get funded for those students. Now, there is a lag. So there is some sort of a timing difference because when we decide on the number of students that we're funding is actually kind of the September before, you know, we actually get funded. So we're trying to project ahead and that's a little challenging. So there is that causing a funding tightening. But the reality is our administration costs keep outpacing our, and keep growing, and have grown respective to other similarly situated districts. So that's something that we need to really look at. I agree, it always comes back to, you know, enlarging class sizes and teachers don't get what they need and, you know, let's cut music. Nobody wants to do any of those things. I don't want to do any of those things. I helped run a parent-led band program when I was at FCCS. So, I mean, I love the arts, I think those things are hugely important. But they're the kind of things that when we start talking about cutting, they get everybody wound up. And so that's where you get all this public feedback. You can't cut my thing, you can't cut my thing. And it puts a lot of pressure then on the Board to keep funding things and tries to put pressure on the community. And so I think to some degree, there's an element of playing politics with that. The reality though is we've got FAD. There's no way we do not have FAD in that administration budget. And that's what we need to focus on.
Yeah, they do this politics on the national level. They do it at the local level where they threaten to perhaps cut things that are dear to, you know, a small majority or a small minority people. And so then everyone raises their arms up about it. School overcrowding was a big thing that parents are very concerned about, as I was, you know. There's no way that a teacher can have a one-on-one relationship with 36 students and do a good job. So aren't we setting everybody up for failure with that? How do, how do we combat that? What do we do?
Well, so the, the funding mechanism for school construction is terrible as far as what money we get from the state of Maryland. We can basically only get money to expand schools for additional enrollment. So it doesn't really account for, unfortunately, kind of like the changes in demographics, you know. Right now, we might have, and I'm just using this as an example, but we might have less seniors graduating than we have third graders. Okay, so every year those third graders have to work their way through the system, means we need more teachers, you know, at following those kids through than we currently did for the graduating seniors, right? So each class is going to have waves. And our system and our school allocation and the sizing of the schools was never built for that. Like, we never built schools to say, okay, this year we need three third grades, but next year we're going to need five, right? We didn't design schools to have any capacity overflow. And we don't design them that way because they don't get funded that way. So one thing, you know, which is challenging to just change at the Board level, that is something we have to talk about at the county level and something people got to have to start talking about at the state level, is how do we change our school funding model so that we do build schools that have capacity? Because that is part of the problem with this overcrowding. Nobody wants to be redistricting all the time. Where your school district is and, you know, the family history and the other things you rely on, your support system, the, you know, before and after care, that is all tied in very heavily to your school district. So you don't want to just be changing willy-nilly your districting. But, and sometimes, like I said, like you need that fourth or fifth third grade in this particular school, you are in a pickle. If your other classes in that school are still also heavy compared to, you know, you might have a third grade across the town that's losing a class, right? So, but we don't have any capacity in this building to even shift these kinds of things around well. And I think to, to that, that's where I think, this is where Boards previously, previous Boards, our county government previously, where everybody has dropped the ball. We are not forward-thinking. We don't sit there and think, what are the problems that we're going to encounter? And how do we start working towards changing these things? It always feels very much like, you know, putting out fires. And that's, you know, something that I think is a little bit different when you come from like kind of a management business type background. You learn to look for those future pitfalls and start to try to figure out how to, to account for them versus, you know, maybe if you're in the weeds of, you know, you know, education theory, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I hear you on that. Yes, I believe that the, you know, that being reactive never, never plays well if you haven't been thinking about what could possibly go wrong, you know what I mean? So, yeah. You touched a little bit on the special education. Obviously, there's a huge spotlight on it because of the Department of Justice investigation. I would also like for you, when you talk about what you think can be done from the Board level, I would also like you to include dyslexia because I just found out recently that children who are dyslexic are often not diagnosed or, not that I expect teachers and special education to diagnose, but it's sometimes not even brought up as a potential issue until way late. And then by that time, like you were saying, it's late and these parents are having to get advocates from the private sector to help them navigate the IEPs or the 504s or whatever that is. What do you think the Board can do to help parents whose children are in special education with IEPs and how to make that process a little bit easier?
Well, again, you know, so this comes to a policy issue again. And this is where the Board is in charge of policy. So the unfortunate reality is you would have thought after the DOJ report, we would have had a big shakeup of who, of leadership in this department, right? Because I don't believe, I really do not want to believe, and I don't believe, that the individual teachers involved in the illegal restraint, you know, did so because any malicious intent, right? I do not believe that at all. But I do think that they were poorly trained, okay? And so training is an administration Board responsibility. Because these people, if you come to work and somebody tells you that this procedure is acceptable and trains you on that and you are going to believe that that's acceptable, okay? So we, I can't look for an individual teacher who did something that they believed and were told was acceptable, right? So we need to get back to, we use this train the trainer model. It's completely unacceptable. We have got to get high-quality training in there for our special needs staff, absolutely. We also need to start training teachers on the various ways, like you mentioned about dyslexia. There's some of these learning disabilities and, you know, dyslexia is a prime example. It doesn't show up, you know, when I, the way that people think it does. When I was a kid, you know, we were kind of, the idea of this dyslexia was, you know, you write your letters backwards, right? And you, and you see a B as a D and a D as a B and those kinds of things. That's not dyslexia, right? I mean, that is sometimes is how it manifests and is one of the visible signs. But I actually have a family member who was not diagnosed with dyslexia until they were an adult. And part of that is because of how challenging in many different ways that it does present. And what happens too is if you are a intelligent, pretty intelligent kid with a good memory and you are able to learn to compensate for the fact that you are not actually reading the words, right? You're memorizing things, you're learning, you know, you're intuitive and you're able to mask to a point. And that's also part of why it's kind of diagnosed later, you know? And usually that point where it's really starts to show up in poor academic performance is fourth, fifth grade and definitely by middle school, which then, as we talked about, now you're trying to help navigate all these things. The other problem too, when we start talking about navigating IEPs and 504s, is I don't think that we have established the processes enough within and who's assigned appropriate responsibilities. It doesn't seem like anybody's ever had to held to account. And so you have, you know, the principal doing a little over here and the teacher doing a little over here. Then you have, you know, what the rules are and that might be coming out with a guidance report or, you know, you're working through the special education department. But there isn't a person that is in charge of making sure your child is getting what had been agreed upon. And so I think that kind of needs to change. That's a policy issue that needs to change. We need to make sure parents are educated on their options as well. Because a lot of parents, I have a lot of friends who, whose children are special needs and they have 504s and IEPs. And they, that was their first experience, right? They were not special needs themselves. Is making sure that families are, we try to make it less scary.
Yeah.
It's scary.
Yeah, and that's what a lot of parents have said, which is sad. That's at a time when you're already stressed about your child's performance and you're kind of feel like you're being interrogated or something, so. There seems to be a lot of people who are parents who are concerned about, you know, the kind of overt drug use at the schools where kids are not comfortable even going to the bathroom during school hours, that they don't feel safe at the school to do that. Do you, do you have any sort of ideas on, again, what can the Board of Education do in this case in working with the schools themselves?
So, I mean, we have the School Resource Officer Program with Frederick County. And one thing that the Board of Education could do is invest more heavily in that program. And also, it is, it's a discipline issue, right? Everybody knows this happens. I have a junior who also does not use the restroom for the reasons you, you indicated. And, you know, and this is common, you know, certainly at the high school level. Most parent, many, many parents know this, you know, the joke about the kids coming home from school and running right to the bathroom, right? Because we know that that's, that's not happening at school. And so why is that not happening? How do all the children know and not a single adult in this school knows, right? And they know, they just don't make it a priority. And so why is it not a priority? Well, sometimes it's not a priority because of the misguided idea that somehow kids shouldn't be punished for some things, you know? That we should not be enforcing the rules to the level that we should be. And I think that that's where the Board sets that policy. I think if we expanded the use of School Resource Officers, I think if we made it clear that the idea that this is just unacceptable because we cannot have something that other children are doing that is chasing kids who want to get a real education away, you know? Making them not want to come to school, making them not use the bathroom all day. I mean, this is completely unacceptable stuff. But Board needs to say, these things are unacceptable with administration. So what steps are we going to take? The Board hasn't said that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think it just, yeah, the Board has to, you know, can only work within the parameters that are set. But certainly it might be good coming from them. Many parents are concerned that at graduation, their children are not knowledgeable of basic life skills like reading a lease, you know, understanding anything contractual, balancing a checkbook or knowing how the banking industry works at all, financial literacy. Do you feel like this is a job that the Board can, or the schools should be tackling? Or do you feel that, you know, this is the parent's responsibility? Where do you feel that that lies?
I mean, I think anytime we talk about things like basic life skills, the reality is that stuff is things that need to be reinforced at home, right? And come from home. However, there are also a lot of people who are grownups and have children who also have not, you know, mastered some of these things. You know, they don't, they don't balance their own checkbooks. I know, because I'm an accountant and I have a lot of those people as clients. And so it's not just, you know, it crosses all levels of the socioeconomic spectrum, let me tell you. But I think that we should certainly look at ways to implement this in school. We can certainly offer it as a elective course. These kids have got to have a certain number of electives, you know what? So why not have this? I'm not necessarily in favor of adding it as a graduation requirement, but I certainly think adding it as an elective and available elective in high school for, you know, life skills. We also can bring some of this down to the younger grades. In middle school, before the pandemic, I was actually working with a friend of mine who was active at the charter school as well. And we were talking about kind of making like a financial literacy club where we would have like a little after-school club with the kids and they would, you know, learn things, basic stuff about the stock market, how to pick a stock, how to track how it went, performed, you know, kind of talk about some basic life things. So we can certainly bring these down in other ways into the school. I don't know how much the Board could do on that, but I certainly think that administration should look at including these kinds of things as an elective course, absolutely.
Yeah. One thing I think FCPS is going to be challenged with, not only today, but probably the next five to 10 years, is the shortage of teachers that are people that are going to school to become teachers or, you know, people coming into Frederick County to teach specifically. What are your thoughts or ideas about how the Board can help, again, not to be so reactive, but be proactive in maybe growing our own teachers or any incentive programs to keep teachers in Frederick County?
So I think we do have an issue with our compensation plan. So I think overall, the feedback that I've received is that we have a comparable compensation plan to other counties. Some of the problem though is our compensation plan includes a lot of money towards benefits and things like that that may not necessarily be super appealing to young teachers. So, you know, kids can still be on their parents' plans, health insurance plans till they're 26, right? Some of those people are coming out of school and they're able to, you know, they're, they're teaching degrees, much younger than that. And so maybe, you know, paying towards their health insurance isn't as interesting to them because they can still be on mom and dad's plan. And they would rather have that cash in their pocket. So I do think that we need to look at ways that we can, you know, put more cash in the hands of some of our starting-out teachers, certainly, you know, rework some of these compensation plans. I also think that we need to look at, you know, what we can do as far as a bonus structure. I think that we should be able to reward teachers who, for staying, for doing a good job, for their longevity in their profession. That is not necessarily, you know, mandated by the union contract. So what, how can we rework some of those things or going forward in the future negotiations so that we have more discretionary bonus ability to keep our teachers here? We also do have, and we have a couple colleges right here in the county, those people are putting out teachers, okay? What kind of reaching out are we doing as far as job fairs and those sorts of things? And plus, obviously, we have, you know, colleges in the surrounding counties as well. But I know from my experience in my profession that people are going into schools in freshman, certainly by sophomore, junior year, many people have internships lined up. Many people have signed contracts that they're going to go work for someplace, work for a firm when they get, you know, graduate. And I think that we need to look at ways of doing that. Part of what prevents us from doing that is our contracts, you know, with our labor, that we can't just go out there and start, you know, offering somebody, okay, you know, here's a future contract. And if you come onboard, you know, here's a $5,000 or $6,000 signing bonus. You know, those kinds of things, you can do that in the for-profit world, but that isn't stuff that, kind of in the union world that they kind of like to see. So that's a challenge too. Like, how do we work with those contracts to make them more favorable to attracting talent and keeping talent?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. And when you talk about, you know, other types of incentives, I know like with Frederick Health and in the nursing, like they'll help pay for schooling in order to, and you kind of work back those years at those, you know, companies. And I, I think there might be something to be said for something similar to a GI bill for, you know, teachers, you know? It's a great way to get the commitment for a few years to help kind of during this time. I think that that is, oh, the last one, obviously, one that's kind of the hot-button issue is Policy 443. I know a lot of parents are concerned about some of the language. What are your thoughts, what's your stance on that? And, you know, what are your plans for Policy 443?
I would like to see Policy 443 amended. I don't necessarily believe that biological males should be in female-only spaces. I was a student athlete. I spent time in the student locker room. I know that I would have been very uncomfortable with biological males in that space. And I, and while I want to make sure that our transgender students are, also feel safe and also feel comfortable, I don't necessarily think that we should be doing some of those things at the expense of, you know, biological girls feeling uncomfortable. So we have got to do something to strike that balance. My other opposition to Policy 443, as it's written and currently adopted, is that it allows for social transitioning at school without parental permission and even without parental knowledge. I'm sorry, as a parent, I just, I have a problem with that. You know what I mean? The, the school does not know my child more than me. So I feel that, and I understand, I completely understand and I'm sympathetic to the fact that there are children who, if they come out as trans or, you know, even if they, you know, if you're talking LGBTQ students, that they could face a lot of, they could face abuse and neglect in their home, absolutely. And that is terrible and that is tragic. And they should not face abuse and neglect in their homes for that. But I don't think as a school that the average teacher is in a position to really weigh whether or not that, enough of that situation exists. So as, as a school system and each teacher and, you know, we're mandatory reporters, right? So if, if a student comes to you and says, hey, I can't tell my parents I want to use a different name at school because they will abuse me or I will face some type of punishments at home. And the teacher feels that that rises to the risk of abuse, then they are by law required to report that to CPS. And so I think that the best policy is to get our teachers out of making that determination. If a child, if a parent wants their child to use different pronouns and the parent is, is part of the treatment plan for this child is involved in, you know, making sure that they're, they are socially transitioning, then that's something that can happen and the parents can talk to the school about that. But I really, really, as a parent, I'm just not comfortable with a teacher that, I don't know, that doesn't know my child, that might have only had my child as a student for an hour a day at the most, a couple times a week. I just feel like you're not in a position to make those kind of decisions, particularly when a parent might be pursuing other treatment options where based upon the direction of the child's treating psychologist, they've been told not to socially transition. So I just feel like that that's not a good area. And I think we're seeing now lawsuits across the country and we're going to have more of them, where the school system did involve themselves in making these decisions. And then it didn't work out and it didn't work out in, with the family or it didn't work out for the child. We have situations where the children themselves have now desisted and they're suing the school district. We have situations where children have ultimately sadly terribly committed suicide as a result of, you know, furtherance of their gender dysphoria and not getting the treatment that they need and things like that. And the parents weren't even aware that this stuff was happening and they've sued the school. And I think you're going to start to see districts really pull back from similar policies because it, as a district, it opens us up to a lot of liability. I think we always have got to worry about what's best for the child, but I don't necessarily think that our school system is in the best position. And, and there are laws and due process designed for situations where a parent is not doing their job. And I think that as a school system, we need to push that out to those authorities, appropriate authorities to deal with and focus on the situations where parents and students are involved and they are, they have made this decision.
Okay, well, I think that finishes up the questions from the parents. I am going to give you the floor to let Frederick know why they should vote for you on May 14th.
So I think our system is at a tipping point. We have strayed too far from the central mission of public education, which is educating the next generation. We need to focus on our academic performance. We need to focus on children developing life skills and real-world employment skills like they do in our current technology center. And we need to tackle our budget as well as making sure that our policies support our special needs students. And I have the skills and background to do all those things. I am a CPA by profession, so I'm well-versed in budgets, but, in budgeting. And I'm also the former, a former Board of Trustees member and the former acting treasurer of Frederick Classical Charter School. So, which is one of our charter schools here in Frederick County. And I know what it's like to run a school. I know what it's like to make a budget. I know what it's like to deal with staffing because as the Board of Trustees, those are all the things that we tackled. And we tackled it getting less money than the similar, similar district schools. So I know how to run a school on a budget. And I think that I can take all of this knowledge into being an effective board member and being a advocate for parents and for families to, and for our children to get the education they deserve. Every child deserves excellence in education. And that's what I want to help support in my role of support on the board. So thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, Jamie. Appreciate your time today and we wish you all the success on Tuesday, May 14th, as we vote for the Board of Education.
Thank you so much, Danny. Appreciate it.